Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Fair System Upgrades Public Hearing. My name is Shannon Benson. I'm in the Community Relations Department here at Valley Metro. So we're going to give you some background on the project and then we will go over the fair policy changes themselves. And then we will open it up for questions and comments. If you'd like to ask a question on WebEx, you can tap the question mark icon, type in your question and then click Send. If you would like to ask your question aloud, you can click the little three dots, select Raised Hand, and at which point I will unmute you so you can ask your question aloud. You're also more than welcome to type questions in the chat box of the WebEx and I can ask them on your behalf. With that, I will turn it over to Dane Riles.
Thank you so much, Shannon, and thank you to everyone who joined us this evening for the Fair System Upgrades Public Hearing. As Shannon mentioned, I will provide a little bit of a project background of the Fair System, a modernization project that is currently underway, and then go over the fair policy changes that are proposed to support the new system. And then as Shannon just mentioned at the end, we'll have time for questions and feedback on what you've heard this evening. Just to provide a little bit of a background on the fair system upgrades that are happening. Right now, we are working with, in Valley Metro, in partnership with the City of Phoenix and our regional partners, are working to introduce a new fair system that will move away from most of the paper passes we're using today to a new system that uses reloadable smart cards and the Valley Metro app, in addition to some paper pass options. The new system is an account-based system, meaning that you will have an account that you use for fare and you will use that account to pay your fare each time you board the system. The new system, as I mentioned, instead of paying for passes upfront before you use them, you will begin to use the system where you pay as you go, a system we refer to as Smart Fare, as a way to pay for transit, and I'll cover that in the next few slides of what exactly that looks like and how that would work in the system. As a part of the rollout of the new fare system, we will have a robust retail network like we currently have today. We do plan to enhance that retail network and change it over to support the purchasing of the smart cards and also loading value onto your account. So again, I'll cover what that means here in a little bit. But just wanted to mention, we do have that retail network today and we will continue to have it in the new system. Also, as a part of the system upgrades, we will introduce later in the project new fare vending machines for purchasing fare, as well as new fare boxes on buses that will be cash only also for purchasing fare on the bus itself. So the next few slides, as I mentioned, we're going to look at each of the proposed fair policy changes and what that means for the system that is being introduced. The main three proposed changes are the introduction of the Smart Fare Payment System that I mentioned. The second is the copper card issuance charge. And the third proposed change is the reduced fare account requirement. I do think it's important to note ahead of us, looking at these changes, that the base price of fares in the new system will not change. And by that, I mean the cost of a one-ride pass for full fare will still be $2. The equivalent of a day pass will still be four for full fare. We still will maintain the reduced fare pricing, again, the base pricing as it stands today. So let's go into a quick overview of each of the changes and kind of talk about what that means for the new system. The first one, as I mentioned, is the Smart Fare Payment System. As you all are probably familiar with, in the current system, all of our passes are sold upfront. So you are paying for a one-day, seven-day, 15-day, 31-day pass, the full price of the pass upfront. And then you use that pass for the remainder of the period that it's good for. In the new system, that will change. So you will not have to purchase $64, a $64 31-day pass upfront. You will pay as you go and basically reach a maximum amount for the same cost of the 31-day pass. So just quickly, going over the Smart Payment System, what that looks like. Technically, you will have an account, which I mentioned earlier, an account with the new fare system. You will load value onto that account. You will add money either through the retail network, fare vending machine, or online. And then you will tap your card or scan your phone before every ride. When you do that, the appropriate fare will be deducted each time. So again, you're not paying upfront for a day pass. You'll pay each time you board and then the maximum amount you pay will stop charging after that maximum amount. Just a few other quick notes about the Smart Fare System before we look at the pricing and how it works. We will remove or eliminate the 15-day pass. As I mentioned earlier, the base price of fares will not change. And then we do want to just emphasize that the reduced fare is available with the Smart Fare feature as long as you have a verified reduced fare account, which I will cover here in a few slides. So I previously showed the slide that kind of showed the payment and paying upfront in the current system. This is again showing the Smart Fare System. So when you board, you will pay each time, but you will never pay more than $4 per transit day or $20 per calendar week or $64 per calendar month for local full fare. On this slide, you can also see we have the reduced fare pricing listed as well as express and rapid. So I'm just going to just pause there just quickly to give a quick example of how this would work for an everyday rider. Let's say you board the bus in the morning and you're paying full fare. You will tap your copper card or you will scan your Valley Metro app and $2 will be deducted from your account. If you take the bus again in the afternoon, you would tap the card or scan your phone again and another $2 would be deducted. So you've now paid $4 for two trips. If you decided to ride the bus or the light rail later in the day, taking a third trip, you would still tap your card or scan your phone, but you would not have any value deducted. You would be riding without having any additional funds taken from your account because you've met the maximum amount for that day. The same thing is true for the calendar week. When we refer to a calendar week, we do mean Monday through Sunday is the period that you would know, you would never pay more than $20 if you're riding local full fare. So if you rode multiple times a day and met that $20 amount that you've paid by Friday, then Saturday and Sunday, if you rode and you tapped your card or you scanned your phone, you would not pay anymore. And then again, same thing for the calendar month. You will never pay more than $64 in that calendar month for local full fare. On the screen, I again have listed the reduced fare pricing for Smart Fare. Again, it's very much the same as what we have today and then the express rapid pricing as well. So I just, I think it's important to list all of those and then explain, you know, how that feature works. It does make it, you know, a more equitable way to achieve that equivalent of a day, week, or month pass. And again, just gives you that pay-as-you-go option. On the next slide, we're going to, or the next section, we're going to talk about the proposed change for the reloadable copper card one-time issuance charge. As I covered in previous slides, to access Smart Fare, you would use the Valley Metro app or a reloadable smart card. And in the new system, that smart card that you can see on the screen is referred to as a copper card. That is the branding that will be used for the reloadable card. As I previously mentioned, that copper card would be available to purchase and load value onto at the fare vending machines at hundreds of retail locations across the valley. And then we'll also be introducing a new fairs website where you would be able to purchase that card and also manage the card. The next bullet kind of talks about that, but through the fairs website, you would be able to register your card, not only so that you can track your purchases and you can track your Smart Fare usage, but you would also be able to track or be able to protect the account balance. So if you buy a copper card and you've loaded $20 onto it and for some reason it was lost or stolen or damaged, if you register your account through the new fairs website, you can deactivate that card and your account balance would be protected. That website will also have other features that we'll cover here in a second. But again, the proposed change to the fair policy is around the issuance charge. For the copper card, there would be a one-time $4 issuance charge to purchase the card. And then, of course, you would also load value onto it. I will mention that for the mobile app, the Valley Metro app, it'll be very similar to the app we have today. There is no charge for using it other than loading, you know, buying your passes or loading the value onto the app. On the next section, we will talk about the final proposed change that we're covering this evening. And that is the reduced fare account requirement. If you're familiar with the system today, reduced fare is available to youth ages 6 to 18, seniors over 65 and over, persons with disabilities, and Medicare cardholders. And in the current system, you can show proof of your eligibility through your ID, if it's an age-based eligibility, or with your Medicare card, or with the Valley Metro Reduced Fare ID. In the new system, we will have a little bit of a transition where we will actually have a reduced fare account for people who are eligible. And that would, that account would be your access to the reduced fare rate for Smart Fare. So that account would be required in order to have access to the Smart Fare feature. However, I do want to mention that on the buses and at light rail stations, there still will be a one-ride option for Reduced Fare if you are eligible, which would not require an account. You could, you could pay cash as long as you have that eligibility documentation. In order to make it a little bit easier to access Reduced Fare, we will be very soon releasing a website where you can apply for most Reduced Fare categories online. That will make it a little bit easier to go through the process to get Reduced Fare, but we will also maintain the option to get Reduced Fare at the Valley Metro Mobility Center. And there will be other approved sites where you can apply for Reduced Fare in person as well. And I think one of the benefits of the Smart Fare System, and I'm showing the Reduced Fare Copper Card on the screen here, is that once you have the Reduced Fare Copper Card or you have Reduced Fare in the Valley Metro app, that is your proof of having Reduced Fare. So if you have your Reduced Fare account, you wouldn't really have to carry around other identification or documentation to prove you're eligible because your account would have your photo and your name and that is your verified method of purchasing Reduced Fare. Also worth noting is that the copper card you see on the screen, that is your Reduced Fare ID. But in the future, when the full system launches, that will also be your payment, how you pay for Reduced Fare. So it's not just showing that you're eligible to purchase, but you'll actually load value onto your copper card as well. I previously mentioned the fairs website. I just wanted to provide a few pieces of information about that website. As I mentioned previously, you will be able to apply for Reduced Fare for most categories on that website. That website will also be where you will order a reloadable fare card or be able to access Reduced Fare in the Valley Metro app. That website will also be used to check the application status once you've applied and you'll be able to see your expiration date so that you have that reminder of when to reapply for Reduced Fare. Once the full fare system launches near the beginning of next year, that website will expand. And as I mentioned earlier, you'll be able to manage your account by adding a balance to your account to ride. You'll be able to protect your balance through registering your card and you'll also be able to access other features to track the usage in the app. So that is a brief overview of the project as well as the proposed policy changes. We are going to open it up for questions, but I just wanted to quickly mention on this slide, we have a URL you can visit to learn more about the project. It provides a little bit of an overview of what's coming. It has an FAQ section and some additional information about the overall fare technology project. And that is available at valleymetro.org/faretechnology. So I will pause there and open it up to any questions.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess my main concern with this is the branding because it doesn't look like they're going to be calling the whole fare system copper. They're only calling the cards copper. They're not, so like, you know, it's not like every other place where like the fare system itself is the name like Pronto Card, the Pronto system for San Diego or cap system, regardless if it's the app or the card. I don't know. I'm just like afraid like that might just cause some confusion for some people.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback. We are introducing some aspects of the new system that will provide the consistency. And I am very familiar with, with the other examples you provided. One of those, and let me go back, on the copper card that you see on your screen, there is an icon and that is our, being introduced as the fare icon that will be used not only on the cards, but also is actually right now in the mobile app. So there will be an identifier that kind of brings it together as one brand. And then the other, the other piece of that is the introduction of Smart Fare. That is really the payment system that's in place is the Smart Fare system. So that will also act as a way to kind of identify the system for people using it. The other thing that I'll mention just quickly is that in the new system, we are going to ask riders to select either the card or the mobile app. So there won't be a ton of scenarios where someone would be using both of them. For the most part, just from an account security and functionality standpoint, you would use one or the other. So it wouldn't necessarily be like an interchangeable thing as far as the usage of the system either.
And then one more question is, will Apple Pay still be there for the loading just value onto the account?
Yes, Apple Pay will be available in the app for loading value. In the new fare vending machines, they will also accept Apple Pay and Google Pay. In the app, we will also introduce a feature in the future to load value onto your account using cash at retail locations. So you could go to a retail location, they will scan a barcode in the app and you could load value onto your account with cash. I think we had a question in the room and if you don't mind, I think Shannon has the microphone working up there.
I'd like to know whether the account balance is refundable.
Six, and what scenario do you mean if, if you're not using it or?
I'm open to suggestions if there are any scenarios when it would be refundable. You mentioned protection for the account if, if the card was stolen or lost. But, you know, I mean, suppose I moved out of state or suppose, you know, I purchased a car. Would, would the balance be refundable?
I don't know, Tyler, if you're able to address that question. I know you may have a little more background on those scenarios.
Thanks, Dane. Yeah, based on our current fair policy, Fair Media is not refundable short of any type of malfunction based on equipment or anything like that. So, you know, that's our current policy right now, but I appreciate the feedback.
All right, so it is still a pay-in advance system where you pay fares in advance and the value is deducted from the card where it already is in your account.
Correct, yeah. You would load your, your smart card fare or copper card fare and deduct from there.
Just to clarify though, you wouldn't have to maintain, for example, for a monthly pass, the full $64. That could be loaded in, you know, $4 daily increments if you wanted. If you're, you know, potentially concerned about that balance being too high, it, you can load in smaller increments over the course of the month.
We will also have a feature through the new system where you can auto-load. So if you want to say that, you know, every time my account balance gets down to $5, I'd like to add five more dollars. That will also be a feature. So, you know, to Kelly's point, you wouldn't necessarily have to have the full value upfront, but you also wouldn't have to necessarily remember to add value each time. You would have that auto-load option if, if you so choose.
I have a question from the chat from Erin Morrison. She says, will it be possible to manage multiple cards with one account?
Yes, under, in the new fare website, there will be an option. So for example, if there's, you know, a family that has a child that has a card with Reduced Fare for youth, you could manage that and then load value onto that card from a single account.
And then one more question from the chat says, is there something being done to strengthen the plastic shields on the scanners on the light rail? They seem to be getting ripped off for one reason or another.
We are aware, I'm assuming that we're talking about the reader guides. We are aware that some of those have been removed and we do have, have those, you know, stock of those to replace them. I don't know that there's necessarily anything in place right now as far as strengthening them, but that's definitely something that we're watching, monitoring.
Yeah, there's a fine balance there of making sure that in a sense, those are somewhat breakaway to prevent damage to the core validator unit. So it's definitely a fine line, you know, you don't want them coming off easily, but you don't want someone who's determined to pull it off to actually cause physical damage to the validator itself. But thank you very much for the feedback.
Yeah, we can address that. So the question was where, where the cards will be available for purchase. We will have the cards available, the full fare copper cards will be available at the retail network locations. So that's hundreds of locations that we will have a website where you can see where those are available, very similar to our retail network today. The new fare vending machines will also sell the cards. So if you're at a light rail station and you need to buy one for the first time, you can do that there. And then the new website that we'll have for fares will also allow you to purchase a card and it will be mailed to you. So you can do it through that channel as well.
I have another question from the chat that asks, are there any plans to introduce credit card tapping directly? Many people keep trying to tap a credit card on the buses and it seems to confuse the drivers.
Yeah, I think there's, there's probably two pieces to that. One is that the current fare readers on the buses, I think we are actually going to update the, the information that's on those. There's a, there's a logo or an icon that kind of looks like it would be tapable. So that will be updated in, in the rollout of the full system so that it more aligns. Actually, it will use that fare icon that I mentioned earlier. So that will be hopefully a little bit more clear of what to tap there. But then in the future, that is something that is, is under consideration is the more open payment system. There are a lot of technicalities, as you can imagine, that go into, to launching that, but that is something that is on our radar.
Yes, the system is, is equipped to support that in the future, so it's on our future roadmap.
Any other questions in the room or online? Okay, give it one second.
There is an issue with people not knowing where to scan on the bus. Can something be done to improve this?
Yes, that's a great point and we are aware of that. We actually are working right now on an update to the app, which will most likely roll out with the introduction of this new system. When you go to scan the barcode on your phone, there will be an animation under the barcode that will show where to scan either on the bus or on the light rail. It'll show both of them, but we do plan to include that and incorporate it as an educational component to the app. And then, of course, as we do outreach for the introduction of the new fare system, we'll continue to provide resources for education. But I think that direct animation will really help to visually show where to, where to scan the phone.
Will it also be possible to get a Reduced Fare copper card by mail?
Yes, so when you go to the, the new website that we're launching, if you have Reduced Fare right now and you are in our system, you'll be able to call and get that pretty quickly mailed to you once the new website has launched. If you're applying for the first time or renewing, you'll go to the, the online website. For most fare categories, you'll be able to apply for Reduced Fare. You will choose either the mobile app or the Reduced Fare card. And then that'll be processed within seven to 10 days and mailed to you. So that will be available through the online site. And that actually for Reduced Fare will launch ahead of the overall system launch for Smart Fare.
Will the new app just show a QR code consistently without having to press anything to make it quicker to use? Since it's just taking value away, you won't, oh, I lost it. Since it's just taking value away, you won't be buying passes anymore, correct?
Correct. So in the app, once it updates, you will have a singular QR code. It is dynamic and continues to change, but you only have one QR code to scan for riding the system. And we are working through the design of the app to make sure that it's very easy to access that. As of right now, there is a button in the bottom in the very center that you would tap and that would immediately pull up the QR code right then and there. So it will be one QR code and you will not have to purchase passes anymore.
And I have a comment that says also in the app, when planning a trip, you go to show your fare to an inspector, your whole trip plan goes away.
Yeah, I think we, we've actually received a few comments on that and I know our app developer is, is looking into some solutions for that. But that's definitely on our radar as well. And I, it may be addressed with the introduction of the new design where there's only one QR code, but that's, that's definitely on our radar. Appreciate that.
Will there be a future version of the app that does not rely on constant internet connectivity or it can't scan?
Kelly, I'm not sure if that's something that's on our, I mean, I think for the most part, just because it's an account-based system, it would need to have the internet connection simply because it would have to have fresh data of the account balance. But I'm not sure if there's anything more to that.
Yeah, we can go back and check with the vendor. Things changed significantly in phase two with, with the full back office system that's available to support. So I, if I'm remembering correctly, it will be less dependent on having the active connection. We can confirm that and, you know, provide feedback through Valley Metro's mechanism for communicating the questions and answers. I believe so. Beyond the barcode, again, on our roadmap is we'd love to be able to leverage NFC functionality, some technical constraints with utilizing that in iPhones with Apple. But yes, thank you very much, yes, for, for, for the feedback. And I'll get confirmation and circle back with the Valley Metro team on the reliance of the internet connection. We do have scenarios where we know we're going to have offline capabilities. So it should be covered, but I will confirm.
When will we start seeing the new fare vending machines begin being installed?
We do not have an exact timeframe for that. That will be part of the rollout of the, the new system, but we don't have an exact timeframe that we can share right now. The page that I referenced or that's referenced on the screen here will be updated periodically with the latest information. So that's a great place to check. And then, of course, we will continue to communicate updates on the project once they're available.
When will streetcar begin charging fares and how would that work with fare capping since it's only $1 to ride?
Yeah, we can, I can address both of those. The streetcar fare, we do not, again, do not have an exact timeframe. It will be free for the rest of this year. Streetcar in the new system will be a one-ride, $1 for one ride. Streetcar will not have its own Smart Fare maximum. It will contribute to the local amount of $4 for one day and it will benefit from that. So if you rode light rail and then streetcar and then streetcar again and you paid $4, you could ride streetcar again without paying, but it does not have its own maximum amount. Any other questions, comments, or feedback? Yep, in the room? Yeah, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. First,
First, first, I, I'm aware that, uh, I'm aware that the, that the separate Platinum Pass program currently, currently in existence will transition over to, to the new copper card system in early 2024. But, so, but however, I have already purchased a pass through one of the programs, specifically the ASU U-Pass program. Hmm, how would, would I have to trade in my, my current pass? Or, or just, or would be affect under, under next year, not 2024?
Yeah, that's a great question. And just generally, as a comment of all our specialty passes, those will all be replaced. But they, those programs will remain in place with the new system. We are in contact with organizations like ASU and, and other organizations about the changeover. And those cards will need to be replaced. And we will coordinate with each organization on making sure that happens. And that will happen at no charge to you. You'll just get a new card when it's available and we'll communicate when to start using the card and when the old one will no longer be available.
Wonderful. The last thing I have is, 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 is a suggestion. But when the retail network comes out for, 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 for the new copper card, please make sure to also include convenience stores such as 7-Eleven and Circle K into the midst to make it even more accessible to the public.
Absolutely, so we're really excited about the retail network part of this project. We're working with an external vendor that works with all kinds of organizations and stores across the country. And we do anticipate having a lot of those very, you know, obvious, obviously convenient and close locations, including Circle K and 7-Eleven. You know, we, we do have to transition with them as well, but they are on our radar. And we're having conversations to make sure that we have a lot of locations available for everyone across the valley. But so for sure, we appreciate that feedback.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Couple more questions in the chat. Will there be a beta test program for the new fare system like there was for mobile fare?
Yeah, we will have a testing program for multiple facets of the new system. We don't have the exact details to share yet, but we will definitely have a pilot program similar to what we had in the rollout of mobile fare.
When will the ASU U-Pass and the Platinum passes be available in the app?
We are working on that with our vendor now. We do know that when we launch the new system and we replace the cards, it will not be right along with that, but we do hope to have it in the app very soon after. Again, I don't have an exact date, but that is on our roadmap for after the initial launch of the new system. And particularly, ASU has shown a lot of interest of having that option. So we're, we're doing what we can to make sure that that follows the launch as closely as possible.
How do the monthly max calculations work for a user who uses both express and local fares? Are both categories of rides tallied separately or is there some other formula?
So for the express and rapid, it is its own category. However, the local fares do contribute up to that category. So if you, if you ride local and express and you ride, you know, multiple times a day, both of those trips would contribute to the express amount. The express amount doesn't necessarily contribute to the local. However, once you've meet, met your maximum for express, you're able to ride local. So it really does work out that you can still use that, that pass or that access for local rides as well. And it, just to provide a little more context, on the fairs website that we're launching and in the Valley Metro app, there will be a tracker for Smart Fare. So you'll be able to see your progress towards your daily, weekly, and monthly maximums so that you know exactly kind of where you stand on the scans that you've had and how much you've paid and where you are in relation to those maximums. So there's a lot of transparency in the system because it is technology-driven.
Will we be able to see trip history in the app as well? This could be useful for figuring out what routes you were just on.
Yeah, you'll be able to see all of your scans, previous scans. And that includes obviously your trip history, but also the amount of fare that was or was not deducted based on the Smart Fare status. And that will also be on the website version. So if someone's using a card and they, they don't use the Valley Metro app, that will be available through the website. And then, of course, we have customer service that would be available to answer questions or provide any information on your account as well.
And then just a comment that says, also, please talk to the vendor about Apple Watch support.
We definitely appreciate that. We've, I think we've received that feedback for Apple Watch and then maybe for some tablets. So it's definitely something that's on our radar, appreciate that. Any other questions, comments, or feedback? Anything coming through on there, Shannon? All right, well, that wraps it up. Again, if you would like more information about the project, that URL will provide as much information as we have available and we'll continue to update it. And then on the screen, you can see if you, you know, like to provide more input, there's an email address and phone number. I will mention that the project page also has a link to the current fare policy survey that's out and open until August 18th. So feel free to check that out as well. And definitely appreciate everyone's questions and feedback. Have a great evening.